Yeah, I bet.
Is there, do we have better lights these days? It feels like I'm under a heat lamp. Doesn't seem brighter? Really?
It is 5:30 PM on Monday, November 14th, and I'd like to call this work session to order. First on our agenda are city updates. So, Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council, and Mayor Gradisar. I have a few city updates this evening. I'll start with a COVID update. The one-week cumulative positivity case count for this past week is up to 208.4 cases, and the one-week positivity rate is 12.8%. So hit that double-digit. That wasn't a good sign. The wastewater report also showed a significant increase. And in Pueblo County, there has been eight days with established COVID hospitalizations at Parkview Hospital. Moving on, I have a message and a report from the Public Works Department about the pop-up cleanup from last Friday and November the 11th. Working with local residents, city crews removed approximately 10 tons of debris from the Goat Hill neighborhood Friday afternoon. In just two short hours, trash, weeds, branches, furniture, and other abandoned items were moved from neighborhood roads and alleys, filling a large roll-off dumpster and two dump trucks. Residents also took advantage of the opportunity to dispose of large items and household waste from their own homes that were all free of charge. The event was advertised to local residents through informational flyers that were delivered directly to the homes and in targeted cleanup areas several days prior to the event. The city looks forward to continuing the pop-up cleanup events, and the next one will be scheduled soon. With respect to an ARPA update, I just wanted to share that I did forward an ARPA cumulative status update to each of you earlier today with as of 11/8/2022. And taking the direction from the City Council Work Session Chair, we will schedule a full work session ARPA update late in the year or early in January. And for the last city update of the evening, I'll turn it over to our city clerk. She has additional updates on the redistricting meeting details that will take place tomorrow, and then the process after that. And after Marissa concludes, that would be the conclusion of the city updates this evening.
I just want to give you an update and remind everyone that we are going to be having a public meeting for the redistricting, which will allow the public to come and comment on the proposed redistricting. We will have a work session dedicated entirely to this topic, where I'll go over everything in detail, go over the public feedback that we got, and other information, which I believe will be at the 28th. But I am happy if there are any quick questions that would like to be addressed. I would be happy to answer those from council as well. I did go ahead and give you the two proposed maps of the staff recommendation of proposal one, and then also a second possible proposal that will be presented tomorrow at the public meeting, which is in this chambers at 1 o'clock tomorrow. And of course, City Council is invited to attend that and give public feedback as well to the election board, as well as the public.
Thank you for those city updates. What questions are there from council? Great. Thank you, Marissa. Thanks, Ms. Solano. Moving right along, then, the next presentation that we have is from Mr. Clayton, and it's regarding Board of Waterworks. So, Mr. Clayton, to the podium.
Thank you for the opportunity to come. Heather was able to attend our water tour this summer. And so she thought you all might enjoy just a brief overview of what we do. And so what we have is our video that we'll share shortly, and then I'll talk about a few projects that we have on the horizon.
From drawing water with buckets directly from the Arkansas River and delivering it to homes and businesses with horse-drawn carriages to the evolution of a state-of-the-art treatment and distribution system. Pueblo Water has served its community for nearly 150 years. Since 1874, Pueblo Water's mission to provide the highest-quality water at the lowest possible cost has remained constant. It is that same commitment to you, our friends and family, that has Pueblo Water positioned well for the next 150 years. Pueblo's water system begins high in the Rocky Mountains. 100% of Pueblo's water is surface water, meaning it comes from rain and snow and not from underground wells. Pueblo has two sources of water supply: direct-flow water rights that are native to the Arkansas River Basin and trans-mountain water that is imported from the western slope. Pueblo gets 66% of its water from the Arkansas Basin and 33% from the western slope. In the 1950s, Pueblo Water's Board of Directors began to buy supplies of trans-mountain water. That water is brought to the east side of the Continental Divide by a system of diversion ditches and tunnels. Trans-mountain water is stored in Twin Lakes, Turquoise Reservoir, and Clear Creek Reservoir, which is owned by Pueblo Water. When needed, that water is released into the Arkansas River to flow downstream to Pueblo. Each year in the spring, Pueblo Water crews plow the Ewing and Ward Ditches to allow that crisp, clear Rocky Mountain water to flow freely downstream. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed the frying pan Arkansas Project legislation, ensuring another source of water for Pueblo and the communities in eastern Colorado and beyond.
I don't think there is any more valuable lesson for a president or member of the House and Senate than to fly, as we have flown today, over some of the bleakest land in the United States, and then to come to a river and see what grows next to it, and come to this city, and come to this town, and come to this platform, and know how vitally important water is.
The frying pan Arkansas Water Diversion Project was designed to move unused water from the western slope to watershort areas on the eastern slope. Four major dams with large reservoirs are used to store spring snowmelt. Rudi Reservoir on the west slope, along with Twin Lakes, Turquoise Lake, and Pueblo Reservoir on the east slope are parts of the project's water storage system and play a major role in the Arkansas Valley's water storage for agricultural and municipal needs. While the primary purpose of the reservoirs is water storage, they've also been developed as prime recreation facilities. Pueblo Reservoir, owned by the Bureau of Reclamation, has become one of the top recreation destinations in Colorado, with residents and visitors from all over enjoying fishing, boating, skiing, swimming, camping, and picnicking. In 2009, Pueblo Water's Board of Directors significantly increased its water supply by purchasing shares of the Besmer ditch. Although Pueblo Water now owns 28% of all Besmer ditch shares, our commitment to supporting the agricultural community remains strong. Ditched water is leased back to farmers and purchased shares in the ditch to help provide municipal water in the future if needed. In 1977, Pueblo Water christened its Whitlock Treatment Plant into service. A $54 million improvement and expansion project finished in 2003, providing Pueblo Water with a state-of-the-art treatment facility. Here, the water is treated and tested to ensure that it meets all state and federal standards for municipal drinking water, which are more stringent than those for any commercially bottled water. Our highly skilled chemists and bacteriologists analyzed the more than 350 water samples taken monthly from sites throughout the Pueblo Water distribution system. The most sophisticated technology available allows our team to monitor water quality throughout the system 24 hours a day, every day of the year. Once treated, water is pumped to 18 storage tanks at a variety of locations. Water travels through more than 585 miles of piping into homes, schools, and businesses. That water also is available to help our firefighters and first responders, as there are 4,197 fire hydrants in Pueblo. Created by the city charter in 1954, the Board of Directors at Pueblo Water is a five-person, independent governing entity. Members are publicly elected to six-year staggered terms. This ensures continuity and stability during elections. Decisions in the water world take years, if not decades, to come to fruition. Pueblo Water's board members are dedicated to maintaining the highest standards of today while always preparing for the future. They have earned the public's trust with their devotion to being fiscally responsible and transparent. The board's charge is to ensure that Pueblo Water provides the highest-quality water at the lowest possible cost. Pueblo Water takes great pride in its support of the community. Our CARES program, which was created in 2010, has helped more than 11,100 families with more than $1.5 million in assistance. Pueblo Water also donates more than $1 million annually in water to Pueblo's parks and other community uses. We played a significant role in the development and creation of the historic Arkansas River Project, and we continue to provide water and services to this magnificent attraction. Since 1984, Pueblo Water has awarded $6 million in economic development incentives to attract and maintain businesses. Pueblo's available supply of water and other economic enticements are attractive to companies looking to start, expand, or relocate their businesses. Since 1874, Pueblo Water has been here for you. Our close-knit team of 135 skilled professionals works hard each and every day to ensure that our core mission remains true: providing the highest quality of water at the lowest possible cost.
Let's see if I can... Yeah, please. I've got a couple of slides here, just giving some statistics of who we are and what we do, and I won't belabor those slides in the interest of time. But I did just want to share a few projects that we have on the horizon. And first being our hydroelectric plant at our water treatment plant. We have a raw water pipeline that connects to the dam at Pueblo Reservoir. And so we're bringing that water in, and it's pressurized about 87 PSI. And we break that down currently to 12 PSI using three screen valves. And so rather than convert that energy into noise and heat, as we do today, we have two turbines that will house at the end of that raw water pipeline. And we'll have a 1 megawatt and a half megawatt. So we'll use the 1 megawatt during the irrigation season when our flows are up and use a half-megawatt turbine in the non-irrigation periods. And so this will save us about $400,000 annually in electric costs. So the second one I wanted to mention, and the city's a partner in this project with us, is what we call our south-side diversion dam project. And so we have a low-head dam just below City Park. And all low-head dams that are in rivers have some hazards associated with them. But this one also prevents fish passage from the lower reach to the upper reach of the river. And because of the hazards and the retentive role that that current creates coming off of that low-head dam, it's not currently navigable. And so we're going to modify that low-head dam and create six drop pools. And that will allow people to navigate that water either in an inner tube, or a kayak, or whatever they choose to use, all the way from below Pueblo Dam to Runyon Lake. So I'm pretty excited about that project. I would tell you that we're currently finishing up a 1/15 scaled physical model, and that work is currently taking place in Alberta, Canada. And so we'll do an owner's test at the end of the month, and then we'll be at final design by the end of the year. And we've started the permitting process on that with the Army Corps of Engineers as well. And if everything schedule holds the way we want it, then it will be open for use in July of 2024. So excited about it. And lastly, we own Clear Creek Reservoir. And that's the only reservoir that we store water in, that we own solely. And currently, that reservoir will hold up to 11,000 acre feet, just over 11,000 acre feet. We voluntarily reduced the amount that we store in that reservoir because of some seepage issues with the dam. And so we're currently not storing more than 9,000 acre feet in it. But we are looking to expand that. We're finishing up a feasibility study this year. We'll start the permitting process next year. And that permitting process will take anywhere from 5 to 10, depending on the level of environmental analysis that we need to do. And then we'll look to expand that reservoir to 30,000 acre feet. And we don't currently have a need and won't for about 30 years, but in the water business, if you don't start on it now and you wait until you absolutely need it, you're too late. So... And with that, I'd take any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Clayton, for all of that information, and what a great video. What questions are there from council? Councilor Flores?
You know, this is a great opportunity, since we're on television, to tell the citizens in this community what a, you know, what a great organization the Pueblo Board of Waterworks is. Number one, I've always believed that the Board of Waterworks is our strongest economic development characteristic here in Pueblo. And we're kind of unique in that area. And I was hoping that you could contrast, you know, the issues in the southwest that a lot of communities are faced with that basically, you know, have been caused by, you know, lack of conservation, just uncontrolled growth. But in our particular situation, where you have, you know, the amount of water that we have, why Pueblo doesn't have the same issues as the issues that are occurring on the Colorado River and in other areas of the southwest. I think, you know, that would be an important lesson, I guess, to the citizens here in Pueblo of how unique and how important the Pueblo Board of Waterworks is to us.
Absolutely. Excuse me. The video mentions 1874, and we've been around for now almost 150 years. And that, to your point, Councilman Flores, is really why we sit in the position we do. And Colorado and the West operates on the prior appropriation doctrine, which means first in time, first in right. And so it's difficult for newer communities to come in and find a water source. The Arkansas Basin has been fully appropriated since about 1888. So any water right that is junior to 1888 is not overly reliable. There will be years when it'll be in priority. And so, but you mentioned the Colorado River and some of the issues around that. And we have participated in an MOU that highlights that the importance of conservation and using our water wisely. And in August, we signed on to that MOU with Denver Water, with Metropolitan Water District in Los Angeles, Southern Nevada Water Authority, and Aurora Water. And we've since grown that MOU. And now there are 31 different organizations across the western US, and that get their water from the Colorado River Basin that are signing on to that.
The, I mean, there's always been this talk in the community that we could either double or triple our size simply because of the work that, you know, the current board and previous boards have placed Pueblo in that environment. And you might clarify that, because I know that you have the ability to also sell water in increments and manage it that way. But could you clarify that?
Yeah, sure, sure. And we do, you know, currently, currently, our direct-flow native water rights satisfy about 80% to 90% of our demands within the community. And so, as you mentioned, we take that excess, that surplus supply, and lease that to others. And so we derive about 30% of our revenue from raw water leases, which is important to our customers because it's a direct subsidy for them. In fact, the average residential customer will spend just $464 in 2023 on water, which is pretty amazing. Now, I know people are saying, hey, my bill's higher than that. But we do bill and collect for the city charges as well. And so that's, but the water piece alone, the average residential customer will pay just $464.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
That answers your question. Appreciate it.
Sure, sure.
Other questions for Mr. Clayton? Councilor Atencio?
Yeah, you say Clear Creek Reservoir?
Yes.
30 years, you'll be able to hold 30,000 acre feet?
Yeah, it'll be sooner than that.
But the question I want to ask is, 30-ish from now, the size of Pueblo, like Mr. Flores was talking about, will probably double, if not triple? We will have enough water for?
Yes, we will.
The amount of people?
We will.
And still be able to lease out some? And due to what Pueblo Board of Waterworks is doing, the policies that you've implemented prior to your tenure, but during your tenure, I'm very proud that the Board of Waterworks is doing what they're doing for Pueblo.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, we're... Of course, as the video mentioned, about a third of our supply right now is, comes from the Colorado River. And that build-out, that mix would be closer to 50/50, just with the ability to reuse our Colorado River rights. But to your point, yes, we stand prepared and ready for whatever growth comes our way, and we'll be able to sustain that.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Clayton, you talked a little bit about the low-head dam on the Arkansas River and how it's going to be the six drop pools. Are you planning on, can you talk more about that? Like, is that going to be leveled right there on the river?
Yeah, so right now, with the low-head dam, it drops 12 feet. And so what you have to do in order to protect the stream bed and the gradient of the river upstream, you have to drop that more gradually. So each drop pool will drop about 2 feet. And so sequentially, that will get it back down to where the river bottom is downstream of the dam right now.
Right. Yeah, I think that's going to be great at preventing deaths and drownings right there, too. So thank you for that update. Other questions, comments? Saying none. Thank you, Mr. Clayton and Board of Waterworks for being here today.
Thank you.
We're going to move right along on our agenda. The next one, then, is from Mr. McWilliams and Ms. Crawford to the podium, please, regarding the downtown gondola.
I think I'll have a glass of water.
You help yourself, Ms. Crawford.
Hi, everyone, and thanks for allowing us to come present to you tonight. We greatly appreciate that again. Do we have our presentation available tonight as well? So tonight, we're going to be talking about the possibility of sort of expanding our capabilities within Pueblo's downtown area by looking at the opportunity to put in a overhead gondola or cable car. Do we have a clicker here? So what Dana and I are going to do tonight is we're just going to talk briefly about some of the basic overview concepts, as well as what the gondola would look like and some of those details. Please feel free to stop us at any point during the presentation or afterward, and we're just going to sort of tag-team this a little bit. So anything I say, Dana's going to kick me and then jump in. So our main purpose for looking at this gondola is basically to improve both the social and the economic stress of downtown and try to come up with a solution, which is the gondola, which solves multiple problems in our downtown area. So it'll benefit connectivity. It'll help our city image, both internal and external, and it'll really be a driver for economic growth. So the gondola itself, if you guys have seen these in other communities, they're used all over the place. Canyon City, the Royal Gorge even has gondolas. So small communities, large communities, it's not anything necessarily that is, it's a big idea, but it's for sure not outside of the scope of what Pueblo A deserves and is capable of implementing. So these are also done all around the world. Dana has been working on another project, which we'll talk about briefly up in Idaho Springs. And, uh, all of these different gondolas have a specific use and intent. And we're going to go through some of ours real quick. So the general route is basically over the Riverwalk. So if you start on the north end of the Riverwalk, fly across the Riverwalk proper as it exists today, land somewhere around Water Tower Place on the west side of the interstate and then fly over the interstate and land at Runyon Sports Complex. Does a lot of different things, right? It actually allows us to, to connect our entire downtown area, but it also allows us to grow. So even though this is the primary route we're talking about tonight, there is also growth potential to expand out, going to places like the Art Center, up to Mesa Junction and other places. One of the things that we're trying to solve is the parking issue downtown. So we have the opportunity, we can just go out and build another parking structure. But for about that same amount of money, we can actually install this gondola. What the gondola does then is it allows us to utilize Runyon and that surface parking at Runyon can be done at a fraction of the cost of a parking structure downtown. It also moves the cars outside of the downtown area so that there's less traffic in the downtown area, but it's still connected. It's also, as I said, it's cheaper to put in this gondola at our initial cost that we're looking at right now than it is to put in a parking structure downtown. So the other thing is, we mentioned just a minute ago, is that we're, we're trying to connect Runyon, which happens to be a so, a great asset in Pueblo, but it's also disconnected and a little bit cut off from I twenty-five. So how do we connect Runyon a little bit better than we have, uh, we've currently got? Again, if we can fly over the interstate, that's going to be a huge help in connecting the Grove, the downtown area with our, one of our great assets, which we're planning on spending some funding, uh, through the county on to expand right now. If you guys are aware of some of those plans at, at the lake and with the ball fields. Changing the ecosystem a little bit. Basically, one of the things we want to do is we want to promote that outdoor lifestyle. We want to promote youth activities and, and our, our assets that we currently own. So if you're aware that I twenty-five currently has seventy-five thousand cars a day that are traveling on the interstate, what better way for us to actually, uh, market internally and externally than to have a gondola flying over? And what's more Colorado than a ski lift type of gondola, right? Our image, one of the things that people come to Colorado for is the ski culture. And if we have a large gondola that seats an entire family or multiple families in a lot of cases, and that's flying over the interstate, we're doing two things in, in my opinion, you know, I've, I'm grown up here. And I really, we have an internal image problem and we have an external image problem. Our internal image problem, I think we, we don't think we deserve enough. And we need to change that. Our external image problem, we have a lot of negativity that, that comes along with the Pueblo connotation. So trying to change that with something that actually sets a higher standard and a better image is something that is, I think this gondola helps us achieve. So moving back and forth, uh, across the, the interstate also does another thing. It actually highlights where our downtown is and it connects a lot of those downtown businesses to the rest of the world. There's a reason maybe now for people to get off the interstate and have lunch downtown because there's a draw. There's an amenity in Pueblo that is something that's attractive, right? The flexible growth path. So as I mentioned earlier, even though this first little one mile stint is just the, the core of everything, it is very easily expandable. So if we need to connect Mesa Junction, if we need to connect the Art Center, if we need to connect anywhere else up or down that corridor, we can actually just tie into that in the future. I do know that there was a, a company that came to talk to you guys a, a week or so ago, uh, Go Booba, I think. And it's a great concept, um, the one that they have as well. But it's, it's a little more, um, advanced, I guess, than, than what this is. Want to make sure that we sort of separate those two concepts and make sure that we, we get the point across that this gondola is something that is already done all around the world, something that is proven, it is something that is very Colorado and is something that promotes our image in a very positive way, internal and external. From that, um, the other thing that I wanted to do is, I think most of you guys know Dana. But I, I want to dote on her for just a, a moment.
Michael, I'm sorry, Mr. McWilliams, I want to recognize that there's a lot of chatter in the audience. And I want to just remind everyone if, um, to, to maintain decorum while in, in the chambers. And please give respect to those who are presenting. If we need to take the list outside just to minimize, um, okay, great. Thanks, Marissa. Sorry, Mr.
Thanks, no worries. So, so Dana has now been involved in over fifty metro areas and communities around this nation. And she has been instrumental in placemaking. I didn't even know what that meant before I actually met Dana. But in, uh, yeah, I'm still learning as she, she points out, right? So one of the things that, that we are very fortunate in having today is Dana in our community. There's a lot of reasons that she doesn't have to stop here and doesn't have to help us. She is actually in Pueblo, Colorado, because she sees a great opportunity and she likes the people. And she likes our amenities and the things that we actually have to offer are, are wonderful. But we need to make sure that we advance those in a proper manner. So, so with Dana now being involved in over fifty communities around this nation, she has a great insight as to what has worked and what has not worked and what placemaking actually means and what draws economic drivers to different communities. So when, one of the things that we're going to be asking for at the end of this, I'm going to reiterate twice. But we've, we've already talked to, um, the county commissioners about this. They are on board to be a partner in funding a feasibility study to actually just evaluate this. Where is the actual route? Where would it go? What does it cost? How long would it take? All of those details. We have a great idea about that right now. But what, what I think the value is, is having someone like Dana involved in things like that so that she can bring in all of her network from around the nation to actually use best practices. And whatever we do, we're going to get far more value out of Dana than that feasibility report to, to bring to our community. And the placemaking and, and the value that Dana is going to bring to the table, I think, is paramount to all of it. We hopefully can use this gondola project as a tool to get Dana to spend a little more time in Pueblo.
You know, um, I, um, I think I just came up here to have that introduction. It was really nice, but, um, for many years, I have to confess that I was among the crowd that drove. I've been doing a lot of work in Trinidad and so I drove past Pueblo. And, um, one day we came into downtown and I was astonished. What great architecture you have. And, um, also what great landscaping you have. And so, uh, and then along the way I met Ryan and saw the project that he's been working on for a number of years. And, and, you know, it's, it's staggering, really. That, that is the largest project probably in the US right now of its type. And, you know, I don't think he's going to goof it up either. So, um, so, um, the, the big thing that really is exciting about having a feasibility study then is that everybody gets a lot more comfortable with this situation because it's a new idea. And sometimes new ideas, especially in smaller communities, have a little trouble, you know, getting along. So, um, I'm, I'm suggesting that we use somebody that we actually used in, um, up in Idaho Springs and his name is Stephen Dale. And he's probably one of the two or three biggest experts in the world on gondolas. And, um, so we would be getting a lot of comparables. And there are a lot of decisions that have to be made, too. For example, what, what are you going to charge? What are you going to charge people to get on the gondola? And are, you know, you're going to have a lot of kids. You, you want the kids to be free and maybe, maybe we charge people who come in from town, out of town quite a bit? You know, all, all of these things have to be weighed. So, um, as, um, Ryan said, my, my field has been placemaking and probably you all are familiar with some of the things that are in downtown Denver because I've, I worked for so many years on Laramie Square. Oh, boy, that was a tough one. Uh, still is. And, um, the Oxford Hotel. And now the Union Station. And I live in a, an old flower mill. And I think probably we'll all get together there sometime. But i- it's also where you place your restaurants. I mean, one of the studies that I was looking at on, um, in preparing to come up here and talk to you about, um, placemaking is that if you really want an active, fun place in a community, go to a corner and, and on each corner, in the four corners, put a restaurant. And, and it really is kind of like boom, I mean, we've got action. And we wouldn't really at this stage want to say that, um, there was a lot of action downtown. Although, you know, you've got some of the really fine antique stores and you've got some really remarkably fine restaurants. And, and, um, people just don't know about, they don't know about Pueblo. So this would give us an opportunity to get them really much more involved. And, um, and it would give you all a place to say that you were involved in starting a new era. And, um, that's not to say that they're bad, they're bad eras, but, um, uh, a new era, you know, is just going to be a lot more fun for all of us. And so, um, I hope you'll support it and, um, and, and get comfortable with it. And all the people who are in this room tonight, you really have to have everybody get involved with your downtown. Downtowns have been kind of written off in recent years. And, uh, and it, it's, it really gets to be, uh, an amazing experience when they all start coming back. And it isn't, they don't come back to complain. They come back to praise.
And I know we're short on time, so we're going to look at the security of everything. We're going to look at the social impact. We're going to look at the cost. We're going to look at the business in the communities. We're going to look at the outside health and wellness aspects of everything and basically how we improve our community. So really our ask is to partner with the county. Let's try to do a feasibility study on this and, and, and the route and the details. And let's see if we can improve our community. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. McWilliams and Ms. Crawford for that presentation. What questions are there from Council? Councilor Tensio?
Well, everybody here knows what I'm going to say, right? Think bigger, Pueblo. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Thank you for bringing this subject up because we, we need and want things like this in Pueblo and we deserve them, first of all. And I think it would be a great amenity to have, I mean, just a, another aspect of how great Pueblo is and, and to make it bigger and better. I don't think it's going to conflict if this other, uh, transportation proposal comes to fruition. I don't think it would conflict at all.
I agree.
It, it would, uh, complement each other as a matter of fact. So, uh, I'm all in. I think bigger, Pueblo.
Thank you.
I know these guys are tired of me saying that, but I'm going to keep saying.
We are, we really are.
We love it. We love it.
I, I've, uh, I'm fascinated by your idea because several years back, I looked at a, a project through a company called Sky Tran. In fact, I brought it up last week. And Sky Strand is very similar to a gondola, except theirs, uh, had electric. They actually, the gondola would actually stop on the ground and would be like a golf cart. And people could take, uh, take off or just get off at that point. But I think you left off two important, uh, points, uh, that are to your benefit. And that's the towers that hold up the gondola. It eliminates the have, having to purchase land that's very, very expensive or having to deal with easements or whatever. The towers themselves can be placed on city-owned land that the city owns. Um, and I think that's really a huge benefit if, you know, for your further, um, presentations. And then secondly, you left out tourism. The Sky Tran idea, when I talked to them, was basically, uh, to put a demonstration project in Pueblo so that people would have a different experience. They would actually pay for that. I think people in Pueblo itself would pay to have a different experience and view of the Riverwalk and would, would consider it, you know, purchasing a ticket just to have that, that exhilarating feeling that you have when you go skiing, too. So, um, I like your idea. Have you done any investigation as to whether the infrastructure money that's being given by the government to municipalities, whether or not this project would qualify? You are moving people around.
Yeah, so it does qualify under some of the transportation grants. And connectivity for underserved communities because we are connecting the Grove, which happens to be a, it's our second poorest community in our community. So, um, so yeah, there are a couple of specific transportation grants that would apply.
My last question had to do with the cost. Obviously you have a configured path as to where you want it. Do you have a number in mind?
We do. So we just recently got an update on that cost. So I asked, uh, so Dana and, uh, the Idaho Springs project, it was really interesting and we're learning a lot from that. But now, uh, Litner Palma has been sort of the, the supplier that is rosen to the top in, in that product. So we've got a quote from them recently. That quote is right around twenty million. There's still another five or six million needed for supporting infrastructure. But it's, it's very inexpensive overall compared to, that's how we can compare it to the cost of, say, a parking structure. So one of the things we're trying to do is make sure that this is feasible cost-wise. With all the little bells and whistles and supporting infrastructure, that'll be part of the feasibility study to make sure we have all of our I's dotted and T's crossed. But I'd say it's in the twenty-five-ish million dollar range at the moment. And feasibility study will sort of hone in on that.
But there would be a cost to riders, so.
And then, yeah, the cost to ride is also something that is done in the feasibility study. And there's a tier system, so you can go more expensive on holidays, cheaper during the weekdays. Um, and that is actually done in the feasibility study as well. And the revenue earned from that ridership is also, uh, put back into the, the entire business plan.
There's a project in, um, Canada, close to Vancouver that's operating. And, um, the people that are involved with the ownership were just amazed and ecstatic. And, I mean, they can, they, as you said, the tourism, they bring, uh, they can bring an amazing amount of money and, and it's, it's something that new, that's new that you can promote.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilor Mashi.
How much is the feasibility study?
Feasibility study is right around eighty thousand dollars and we can go up or down from that based on how detailed we want to get. Do we want to do surveys and all that good stuff? So one of the things So one of the things we would do, if you think this is a good idea. Is present a proposal that has sort of a menu of items on it and what that feasibility study would include. But overall, it's right around 80,000 is a good ballpark number.
Thank you.
Counselor Warner.
Hi, thanks for that presentation. I think you'd be better off to go from the River Walk to the State Fairgrounds. I mean, the State Fairgrounds really needs something and. I mean, to bring more money to that facility would be would be awesome.
I totally agree, and I think that's a great expansion opportunity.
Is the answer at all.
So so the reason that that I would. Focus on the downtown area is I've learned a lot from Dana. Basically, what all these communities around the world are doing is they start with their very best asset and they work out from there. So if we have a downtown asset like the River Walk, which I think is the best asset we've got in town. That's the asset that you should focus on for economic drivers. Because it it make it only makes sense that if you go too far outside of that best asset. You're you're off in the boonies again to where you have to create an infrastructure that is not all there. So we want to use our best infrastructure, use our best asset and grow from there. And connecting to the the State Fair? Absolutely, I agree. It's a great phase two of this program. But I think you need to start with something that pays for itself and has the amenities in the beginning. To make the business case and stand on its own two feet before you go out further. Just my suggestion.
Other questions or comments? Thank you. And thank you so much, Ms. Crawford and Mr. McWilliams for that presentation.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank.
Okay, moving right along in our agenda are is the Police Department towing regulations. So can I have Chief Knoller and Sergeant Censorbox to the podium, please? When are you guys ready?
Good evening, Work Session Chair, Count Members of Council, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Sergeant Censorbox. He has the most in-depth knowledge on this, and I think he can. Answer most of your questions through the presentation.
Good evening. I'm Sergeant Michael Censorbox. I am the supervisor over the Traffic Division for the Pueblo Police Department. The reason why I'm here is we would like to change. Some of the rules in regards to our tow rotation and the ability for the tow companies to charge the state defined. Rates currently. We charge less than that. But I'd like to present to you some of the reasons why we'd like to move to the state regulated. I made a PowerPoint. Oh, I've already introduced myself. So so. Some of the reasons why we want to do this is towing regulations are. Are are created through the Permanent Regulatory Affairs and the Public Utilities Commission. So they create rates. That are put out to the citizens and the citizens have a right to go to these meetings and. Understand why they're being charged and what they're being charged. So they have a voice. The citizens of Colorado have a voice. In this whole process. In reviewing and viewing our current regulations and tow rates. Our rates don't. Atest for the. The extended amount of time for. Some of the larger scenes that we can have within the city. So they are a flat rate fee. They're not based on an hourly fee, which the PUC regulates and says what they can charge. They're already regulated by the state and they take a lot of factors into an into an account to come up with these rates. So they they regulate them already. Part of my research, Public County Sheriff's Office, the Colorado State Patrol in this district. Already used these rates and that's where this kind of started from. But I've also reached out to a lot of other similar socioeconomic areas within the state. I reached out to Fort Morgan, Lahana, Alamosa, Walsenburg. The only. A only agency that I was able to find was Lamar Police Department that regulated what the tow companies could charge. Whereas Boca County, which Lamar falls within, they don't regulate. So the majority of the all the jurisdictions within the state of Colorado. Use PUC rates. So let me talk about the tow rotation. So currently we have 13 tow companies on our tow rotation. And those are tow companies that we trust and we call. The inclusion onto that list, they're vetted very well. There are some tow companies within within the city that we don't use. But we vet them because they're representatives of the Police Department and the City of Pueblo for people traveling through our city. They're held to a high standard. And hold very ethical business practices. These tow companies are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And the to perform these services that they're the only ones that can perform these services. We need them to be able to clean up our streets, be able to sit there and clear roadways for other motoring public. So I want to explain a little bit the difference between a public tow and a private tow. So a public tow is defined a removal of a vehicle that's parked on a public right of way or on public property. At the direction of law enforcement. So they can either be consensual, so the owner knows about it, people involved in an accident. They sit there and they need towing services. We call the tow services. They have the vehicles removed. Or non-consensual, such as an abandoned vehicle, been properly tagged under statute and ordinance. And they're removed. A private tow is defined as removal of a vehicle that's parked on either private property. Or at the discretion of the vehicle owner. So that can either be consensual that your vehicle breaks down. Then you call a tow company, they come pick it up. And or the property owner, such as a business or a private property, they can call have a vehicle removed. Now, law enforcement is not involved in any of those. Those are private matters. So the main focus tonight is to talk about the public tow. One thing, it was on the news. Well, about the middle of the summer was a lot of the predatory towing. Predatory towing is mainly is all dealt with through private toes. They are not public toes. So they they put out House Bill 1314. And that read, that's what regulates private toes and what they need to do. That does not affect law enforcement toes or public codes. But this is the number of vehicles we towed since 2019. So so far this year, we towed as of October 12th, when I created the PowerPoint. About 3,500 vehicles this year. 656 of those were stolen vehicles. Since October, of course, that's gone up. And I've done something a little bit extra on top of the PUC regs. To address our victims of of crimes that I'll. Move to momentarily. We do tow a lot of vehicles in Pueblo, abandoned vehicles, vehicles involved in accidents. They're they're all they're all accounted for and dealt with through the Police Department. So how does PUC get these rates? So in 2014. P under House Bill, PUC, there was a towing task force created. Now, on that task force, there was several different entities. And in 2016, it went from nine members to 14 members. So these are all appointed by the governor. There are representatives from all different walks to include. Law enforcement, the Attorney General's Office, the Public Utilities Commission, insurance. People from the several people from the tow industry, but it also involves citizens. That are most affected by. By predatory towing. The PUC on this towing task force does deals with public and private toes. And also law enforcement and State Patrol. It took them two years to come up with the regulations. And they came up with some of the factors that they need to come up with what they need to know. To set these rates. Some of them are equipment costs, fuel expenses. Insurance premiums, employee costs, cleanup costs. And several other things that they took into account to come up with their numbers. This is our current regulation. This is what we charge. Everything is a flat fee, as you can see, so it doesn't matter if they're out there for 30 minutes or it doesn't matter about their four hours. So I apologize for the size, but you can see how it's broken down. It's broken down by time, by what the vehicle's involved in. It's and I'm sorry to say it's very messy. PUC has already fixed all this. That's another reason why I would like to change it to what the state rates are. And so. Basically, you know, it goes up by time of day. If it's a federal holiday, if it's a weekend. That stuff doesn't need to be regulated. So PUC tow rates are based on a quarter hour. So every so the rates that they see and rates I'll show you in the next slide. Are the for one hour. It was based on a quarter hour. So that's once the towing apparatus starts their way to the scene. And once they get back from the scene. So the reason why they based it on a quarter hour is because we have some major scenes, especially like along I-70. Here in Pueblo, I-25 that, you know, if you have a semi rolled over, those are the rates that that. Those are the scenes that take a lot longer. We had a battery truck turnover and that that took approximately nine hours to clean up. It was 36,000 pounds of batteries. So the biggest thing and Chief Knoller actually brought it up, they're based on a quarter hour. But how do we know if the tow companies are going to follow that rule? Well, there are a risk of losing their livelihoods if they don't. And we have cameras, we have body cameras, we have in-car cameras. If I find out that they're doing that. Number one, I'm going to sit there and they'll be removed from the tow tow rotation. Number two, they'll be reported to PUC for possibly losing their license. They're going to lose their license. That's why we vet who we have. The only way that these rates can change are by legislative action in the state. They tend to go up about every two to three years and effective in October. These are the rates that I'll show you are the most current rates. So they have to have public input because they're regulated by PUC. Before they even go to legislature. So the public has. The right and the privilege to actually have input before these rates actually go into effect if they're if they're increased. And I put up an example, so a 45 minute tow for a minor accident. At 10 o'clock at night, under our current tow regulations, $160. Under the new tow regulations, $174. That's an increase of $14.39. But it's not anything out of the ordinary, and this would be a normal tow. People hit a curb, pop a tire, you know, that's that's it would be a normal, normal situation. This affects mainly our larger scenes. Like this one. This is Fourth and Utica on. Summer 29th to 21. A two car accident, no one was killed. If you look at the light posts, that's half the car. The other half of the car is up in front of anything automotive. Cross. So that's one of our tow rotations. Across the street is another vehicle, another one of our tow rotation with Car Doctor. That scene was two and a half blocks long. Car traveling over 100 miles an hour hit another vehicle. Three and a half hour cleanup. They were only able to charge $180 per vehicle between two tow companies. Each tow company was able to charge $180. They used over $800 worth of equipment. And in the business world, as many of you are business owners or and you know that if you're spending $800 to get paid $180, that's bad business. And we're here to look out for our our businesses in Pueblo because they're extremely important and vital to our community. This is the current tow regulations for the for the PUC. A lot of people look at that number, the $232, so that would be any vehicle under 10,000 pound. But you got to remember that's based on one hour. It takes 30 minutes. I watched a Honda Civic get pulled towed from King Supers to Wayne's. It was a 15 minute tow. They would have barely made enough money to pay for the gas. And by the way, I have representatives from the majority of my tow companies here that are are supportive of this measure, including Wayne. But so it's very clean. It just tells deals by the weight of the vehicle. You know, if it's a semi rolled over, semi rolled over, we deal with it that way. If it's, you know, a normal accident is dealt with. You look at the bottom, that's the one thing I added on with the approval of our command staff, PD regulated tow rates. This is what I was talking about to help out the victims of crime. So recovered stolen vehicles, as you saw, we had close to 700 of them as of October. We don't want to re-victimize those crimes, but we can't do the job for free. We don't have a budget to sit there and start paying the tow companies out of PD budget. Or he hasn't given me, they've given me a budget to do it. So flat rate, $100 if they're not involved in an accident and they. The tow companies don't charge for the first three days of storage. If a car stolen out of Denver, it's towed down here in Pueblo, it's $100 if you pick it up in three days. So. That isn't regulated by PUC, but I think it's a fair way to treat our victims. So in conclusion on this. Our tow companies provide an invaluable service to our public. They clear roadways, they keep they keep everything moving. They do a job that the Police Department and the city doesn't have the equipment or the knowledge to do. PUC already current regulates this. There's absolutely no need to over regulate something that's already regulated fairly by the state. They're based on statewide and nationwide data. Finally, it's a fairest way to approach this. We need to support our small businesses and pay them what what services that they provide.
If I could just say in closing, I think. The ability to do this under the PUC system allows for us to more easily increase prices for the tow companies as the years go on. Because it's something that's updated by the state on a regular basis. It also gets us out of the business of of regulating prices as part as part of the Police Department when it comes to towing. As Sergeant Censorbox said, most of our peer agencies in the Pueblo County area already go through this process. So they're getting to charge PUC rates on any toes outside of the city, but they can't inside the city. So it's it's a unique situation. I think this helps address.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Sergeant Censorbox. What questions are there from council? Counselor Flores?
I just wanted a couple of of clarifying questions. It's hard to determine. How far off we were percentage wise from what the PUC allows? And then the second question is, how much from our current rates that we're charging, what kind of a percentage are we increasing? Is that is that a fair question?
It's a fair question, sir. It's it's done by case by case basis because some instances, so our tow companies are spread throughout the city, north, south, all over the city. So it depends on what the actual incident is. Like I showed you with a a a scene that takes and is basically based scene derivative. So if a scene is going to take an hour and a half to clean up and utilize a lot more resources, it's going to be more expensive. Whereas your normal fender bender at 50 and Elizabeth can be there, taken out, swept up and gone in a lot quicker time. Therefore, they will only be allowed to to charge. The time that it takes to clean up that those scenes and open up the roadway and get the vehicles out. So there's real, it's it's a real, it's it's like I said, it's seen derivative. So there's not really a way to tell. Because we don't, we never, we had a flat fee.
I I think Sergeant Censorbox is right. I mean, it is case specific. But I think the best way to look at it is if we had an hour long tow. Right now, I think we charge 100 and what did you say, $160?
160, it depends on the time of day.
They would be if it was a vehicle under 10,000 gross pounds, they'd be able to charge 200 and and some dollars. I can't remember.
32.
So it's it's a little bit more expensive on the hourly rate. But it's probably more fair to what that tow company is is the manpower and the the cleanup costs that they're incurring. Because they they don't pay under our system, they're not getting able to, they're not able to charge for like the. Oil dry and the the man hours that it takes to sweep up and clean up a scene. When you're talking about a scene that's three and a half hours to clean up, under our current system. It I mean, the the it's inversely unfair to the tow company. To only be able to charge $180 when your employees are getting paid X amount of money, your your equipment's running. Your your employees are getting paid X amount of money, your your equipment's running, you're using uh quick dry, um sweeping up the scene, picking up pieces. Um, so I, it is, it's hard to quantify exactly. The closest way you could probably get some kind of example would be to do it on an hour rate. Because on an hour rate, um, we're charging one sixty and I think it's two thirty is what sort of Censor Box said. But it's probably way under what we should be charging in the city currently.
Thank you.
Councilor Warner?
So um I have a a couple of questions. Um. So like the Duracell, was it the batteries? Were those like little Duracell batteries all over the place?
Cars, marine, full-size.
All right. Do you rotate your um tow truck drivers? Are they rotated, those thirteen companies?
Yes. So what they do is is they go to the, the officer will call dispatch, give me the next tow on rotation. They're lined alphabetically. And they go through the rotation sometimes once a day, sometimes twice a day, sometimes more depending on the number of accidents within the city. But they they go through the full rotation of the thirteen companies. Um, and whatever, you know, if it's Cordova, then it goes to Dario's, I mean, and then discount and it just goes through that entire.
Just keeps rotating. And then these charges, uh, don't these people recoup this from their insurance company?
If they have full coverage insurance, yes.
Okay.
There it's it's all based on their whatever level of insurance that they may have. Um, their insurance. We have one of the lower rates of people driving with um full coverage insurance in the state. So a lot of times they may not have insurance and then they would have to do it. If they have minute, if they have the bare minimum of insurance, they're going to incur the cost. They have full coverage insurance, newer vehicle or anything, generally that is all reimbursed to through insurance company.
Sure. Hey, thanks.
Councilor Tensio?
What's the average time for a uh tow?
Good question. Though, under our under our regulations and and uh they have thirty minutes to respond. So from the time they get the call to the time they arrive on scene, they have thirty minutes. Now, PUC doesn't regulate that, the police department regulates that. So they must be on scene within thirty minutes. If they are not, they are removed from that tow and the next and the next one, and then they lose money. So the majority, unless it's it's a major. Snowstorm, they can't get there in time, they'll call dispatch and say, hey, I'm running ten minutes later, whatever. But under our regulation, they have thirty minutes to respond. Major incidences are. Much fewer than the average. I mean, a tow truck gets there, picks it up, takes a fifteen minutes to pick it up, another fifteen to get across town. Uh, under this fifteen-minute uh charge time. Who's going to regulate whether they charge fifteen minutes or forty-five minutes or an hour and forty-five minutes?
Well, it's somewhat self-regulating, right? Um, we do have an officer right now that.
Try to make as much money as they possibly can.
I apologize, I didn't mean to speak over you. Um, we do have an officer right now that that works with the tow companies and kind of looks at that kind of thing uh. Um, and and really, there's a pretty simple fix. So we call PUC if that happens and PUC investigates them and they could actually pull their license uh uh for doing that. So it wouldn't. It it probably still happens in some places, but it really is not economically viable for the company. If they do that, they would lose their license. Um, and no longer be able to do that. Not only that, but there's a removal system to get them off of our list if they're going to do that kind of thing as well. We can take, we can remove them from our our tow list.
Other questions or Councilor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, how many out of this thirteen, uh, let's say there, you say you run through the rotation once or twice a day? Out of the thirteen or twenty-six, how many of those are actual uh cleanup accidents? Like cleanup situations as opposed to a a warrant, they get uh put in handcuffs and their car gets towed off the street? How many are actually cleanup incidences out of the thirteen or twenty-six daily?
I don't have that and that number for you. Um, I would have to. Kind of go through our tow slips and figure out which ones are involved in accidents, which ones are are rest. I apologize, I don't, not sure on that.
One thing I would say is that most of the cleanups are going to be incurred, as you would imagine during an accident, the level of cleanup is is where the the real incident lies and. Um, the number of massive accidents that we have, like we're talking about with the batteries or the three and a half hour cleanup, those are rare. But they do happen. Um, normally an accident, um, I mean, a a traffic accident, they could probably on an average fender bender. You know, thirty, forty minutes uh and they're, they got it swept up, they got the pieces up and they're and they're on their way. Uh, and and to be honest with you, it's in, it's in their interest as well to get uh uh that accident cleaned up and moved on as quickly as possible because they can move on to the next tow. So it it kind of uh, it works to. Support one another through this process.
Yeah, well, the reason why I'm asking that is because um if we're saying that these major cleanups, folks need more. Money to be able to do this, to be able to turn a profit, if the majority are actually those thirty to forty-minute cleanups, then those are viable to make profits. And when we're talking about increasing these prices, when you said yourself that it's the. Folks with the full coverage insurance that are able to walk away unscathed from a. Might like a higher tax, then this is actually targeting lower-income folks on taxing those folks more. Do you understand how that correlates?
I do. Um, and and that is something that we have tried to keep in mind as we move through this process. I I remind you that the uh. Agencies in this county, except for us, all use the P U PUC system. It's used in Denver, uh Denver uh city limits uh. Which has areas of of similar uh problems with 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 Pueblo or socioeconomic areas. Um, and it's used there. Um, it's used in Colorado Springs, it's used in oh just about every department uh throughout the state.
But Pueblo is also, as um your sergeant explained, um, one of the lowest. Um, communities with full coverage insurance and insurance. So this is. A blatant kick to um some lower economic folks. That's my point. Thank you.
Chief, if we're, if all of the other counties are doing this, why aren't we currently doing this?
Uh, for years and years, this is the method that we have used uh to uh uh regulate toes within the city of Pueblo. Um. Twelve years ago, when I was the traffic sergeant, we went through a process that um re revamped that that contract somewhat. It's been probably, I think, uh. Five years ago, we we did another revamping of that contract. Um, and that's part of the issue is it is very time-consuming for us to work through the process to come up with these prices with legal in in other entities. Um, and taking the tow companies uh uh needs into account as well. I mean, a- a- as we've said. And I I'm not here to defend or promote the tow companies, but they are businesses, they are in business to make money. So we do have to take their needs into account as well. And when you talk about an eight-hundred-dollar cleanup. Um, that they got paid uh between two different companies, three hundred and sixty dollars. Um, this is just not viable in those instances. Now, those large wrecks are rare, but they are not so rare that they don't happen frequently. Um, when you look at three thousand six hundred accidents in a year, um, the percentages are are not that great of those massive cleanups. But there's still cleanups that take two hours, an hour and a half. Um, toes where they're pulling vehicles up out of ditches and from around telephone poles that they've got to bend the cars and and get them uh off the poles and. Um, stuff like that. Um, so I think the fairest way to regulate it is through the PUC where. Citizens from all over the state have the ability to go to the PUC and and argue their perspective, whether that's for or against a rate change with the PUC. And then that PUC every couple of years comes out with a new uh a new rate, and then we would just adopt that new rate. Uh, it would be a lot more uh seamless. I think it would be a lot more fair. There's a lot more people that have input in how those those prices are. And uh as Sergeant Censor Box pointed out, there are uh most agencies in the state are already doing this.
Great. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Sergeant Censor Box, and thanks, Chief, for that. I don't see this on first reading, Ms. Solano. Is this going to be an ordinance or resolution?
We were hoping for some guidance on whether we should move forward with a resolution to adopt the PUC uh language into our contract um with the, or it's not really a contract, it's an agreement with the tow companies. Um, and then we would have legal draft that up and and draft up the changes uh uh to the tow regulations.
Draft it up, I think. Great.
Thank you.
Um, moving right along then on our agenda, the final um couple of minutes are dedicated to council and board commission updates. Um, because we're not only um sitting on various boards and commissions throughout the city and the county. So it's a good opportunity to inform everyone in here, also welcome everyone in here. Um, but it's also a good opportunity to um inform each other of the various boards and commissions that we all sit on. So Councilor Martinez Ortega, any updates from the ones that you sit on?
I sit on the uh Airport Memorial um Board, and I usually give the updates, but I'll allow um. Uh, Counselor Maestri, since I've given all the updates this year, I'll allow her to take that over.
Councilor Graham?
Okay, great. Um, I'm on the Latino Chamber Board, and the update I have for them is their annual uh Festivals of Trees is coming up, December eighth at five o'clock. It's a really cool event. It's at the Union Depot, and I encourage everybody to go. And I also sit on the Hart Foundation, which is uh the Riverwalk. And this year, their annual Riverwalk lighting will be November twenty-fifth from five to eight, where they'll light up the Riverwalk. It's a fun time. I encourage all the citizens to be there.
Councilor Tensio?
I don't really have anything on the boards that I sit on. They're just. Average business that they're going through, so don't, yeah, just two-hour meetings and. We just go to meet.
Um, well, I sit on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have reviewed several applications for residential development, including Keating. They're going, uh, Keating is going to be changed into apartments inside. And then um not only will there be apartments inside Keating, but there's going to be um triplexes built behind Keating. So keep uh and they're going to refurbish the theater as well. So that's going to be exciting. Um, and then also, uh, the Chavez-Furth Purportory uh School is going to be um building a um. Basically, a middle school on top of their already existing high school. Um, and then their existing uh Acilia Cruz Middle School is then going to be for their elementary school. So they're kind of moving students around, but they're going to be building on top of the already existing infrastructure there for their middle school students. Um, and then I'll have Councilor Flores update about the Urban Renewal Authority.
Uh, I serve on four boards. One of them is Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority, and uh. They've been busy doing two um feasibility studies for the Spelter Area, which is the area. Uh, to the north of CF of Alvarez Steel. And uh those will be coming out shortly. One of them is for the West. Park District over by where the uh the new development is going and the new jail, yeah, the neighbor works thing. So stay tuned for that. I'm also on PEDCO and uh we're, we continue to look at uh several prospects. Uh. Right now, we've been working uh hot and heavy with uh CS Winds, which is a big company that wants to, that it currently exists. Uh, they're the ones that make the big towers. They purchased that from Vestas and they want to uh. Build another plant and maybe potentially hire four hundred more employees. So that's a good thing, and we're in the middle of that. I also sit on the Front Range Passenger Rail uh District. It's a new district that was developed to see if we could put rail service between Ford Collins and Trinidad. And uh we'll have our first retreat uh the first week in December and uh. Uh, we're basically a very brand-new district. It was just created by the Colorado uh by Colorado statute. And uh, so stay stay tuned on that. I also serve on PACOG as all of us do. And we're in the middle of a five-year plan uh that I even believe might be uh on our agenda tonight. And it just kind of gives the uh uh the facts about the needs for Pueblo and Pueblo County. So uh, very busy with all those uh things that are going on and uh. That's all I have to report.
Councilor Maestri?
Um, our most recent airport meeting out at at the airport. Um, they put us on standby for November and December. So mostly everything they've got is done for the year and will reconvene in January. Thank you.
Councilor Warner?
Well, I don't have any committees, but um I would like you to give us an update on the homeless and housing, if you can.
Yes, uh, we meet actually this week, Councilor Warner, if you want to come to that. Um, at the last meeting, we are, we spoke a lot about, um, well, like one of the committees is the planning. Um, the Planning and Development uh Department here, and they're actually redoing their codes um for um. Dan, do you know what I'm talking about? They're redoing codes for. They're basically like um. The the infrastructure that's right next door to homes. Uh, since, yeah, accessory dwellings, ADUs. So it should hopefully help to navigate like the tiny home. Development and more like the smaller homes or having multiple homes on like a single lot kind of a thing. So we were talking a lot about the accessory dwelling units, the ADU codes. Um, so that's a big thing. And then um we also did have a presentation. Counselor Graham joined that um meeting from Melanie. Who is the Director of the uh Rescue Mission. Um, and um, that's. That's how how we came to meet as a city and a county for um basically. Not letting our rescue mission close its doors because of lack of funding. And um I know that Melanie's actually going to be presenting uh this Wednesday. A lot of the agenda is is about the rescue mission. Um, so we'll see what she says after that, but I can certainly forward you the Zoom info if you want to join. Wednesday at three, three-thirty, I believe, uh Zoom. Councilor, yes, yep. Councilor Graham, yep. Councilor Graham, did you have anything from the last commission? Because you went to that, the last commission of housing and homelessness meeting with Melanie?
Um, I think, you know, she just kind of disclosed to us that the mission was in bad shape financially. Um, a lot of their grant funding. The year has been used up and they haven't received any more grant funding to. Fund through the end of the year. Um, when Melanie gave us her presentation, as of today, actually, the mission would have had to close. Um, their doors without some funding. So I know they. Um, they did have some churches around town come come through and they were able to provide them some funding. I do know that the county has on their um agenda either tomorrow or Thursday. They are going to provide them with seventy-five thousand dollars um to get them through the rest of the year. So. They can keep their doors open. A lot of the trouble that they had with uh funding is the increase in. Um, safety concerns that they have down there. They need security now. And they also don't have people to help out at night. Um, so the volunteers that they have. Um, were not enough, so they're looking uh for actual employees to come and and spend the night down there with the clients that they serve. And so I know that they they did hire a new grant writer. I'm not sure if she's still uh there or not. Um, so I know that they were working on getting some grants to. Get through next year, but the county did come through and they're going to give them seventy-five thousand dollars this week sometime.
Okay, I will send you the Zoom link, Councilor Warner and Councilor Tensio. Um. Okay, seeing no other than business, I conclude this work session um at six fifty-seven PM to adjourn at the regular meeting soon.